La Cour.
Please be seated, the sitting is open.
The Court meets this morning to hear South Africa, Algeria, Saudi Arabia, the Kingdom of the Netherlands, Bangladesh and Belgium on the questions submitted to it by the United Nations General Assembly regarding the legal consequences following on from the policies and practices of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory and in East Jerusalem. Now, as I noted yesterday, each delegation will have thirty minutes to make its oral statement and should not exceed that time.
Ten minutes after the first three participating delegations have spoken, and then we'll proceed with the next three delegations. With that, I shall now give the floor to the delegation of South Africa and invite His Excellency Mr. Wuzi Muzi Madoncela to the podium.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, this is both an honour and a responsibility of monumental proportions to appear before you today on behalf of the Republic of South Africa for the second time within forty-one days. Mr. President, whilst South Africa's foreign policy has always favoured a two-state solution, the prevailing conditions suggest that unless such an approach deals with the inequitable offering of land to Palestinians, the dismantling of all the illegal settlements, the rights of return to all Palestinian refugees, such a solution may solidly disenfranchise, lead to the disenfranchisement of the indigenous people of Palestine and concretise the prevailing injustices brought about by decades of apartheid settler colonialism. A just solution for all who legally qualify to live in historical Palestine would need to be negotiated with the assistance of the international community. The inordinate delay in achieving a fair and just settlement has resulted in an unending cycle of violence. A clear legal characterisation of the nature of Israel's regime over the Palestinian people can only assist in remedying the ongoing delay in achieving a just settlement. In this regard, on the legal questions placed before the courts by the United Nations General Assembly in Resolution seventy-seven slash two-four-seven of thirty December twenty-two, we wish to make the following submissions. South Africa cannot overstate the significance of this advisory opinion for the Palestinian people, more especially the legal characterisation of the situation of occupation and the imposition of the system of racial oppression and apartheid, which have unconscionably been permitted to continue for far too long. The occupation alone has persisted for fifty-six years. As the UN Special Rapporteur on the Occupied Palestinian Territories explained in twenty-twenty-two, the occupation by Israel has been conducted in profound defiance of international law and hundreds of United Nations resolutions, with scant pushback from the international community. Consequently, Mr. President, that defiance by Israel has already led to the killing of tens of thousands of Palestinians, including an estimated thirty thousand killed in the past four months alone. These are not mere statistics, Mr. President. They are flesh and blood of the Palestinian people. Therefore, we must ask, when will Israel's decades-long impunity for widespread and systematic human rights violations and violations of peremptory norms of international law end, if not now? Over the past one hundred and thirty-six days, the world has watched in horror daily the relentless attacks on Gaza, the ferocity and violence of Israel's latest military campaign against Gaza and its flouting of international law, including an order of this court, which was handed down on twenty-sixth January twenty-two, is the clearest indication that Israel considers itself unrestrained in its actions against Palestinians. Its actions recur with even more depravity and bloodshed, being of such a serious nature as to lead this court to find them plausibly genocidal. I remind the Court that it is in our recent submissions before it, in the hearings for the indication of provisional measures in the application of the Convention and prevention of and punishment of the crime of genocide in the Gaza Strip in South Africa versus Israel, South Africa understood, underscored, how Israel's ongoing acts and omissions in Gaza form part of a continuum of illegal acts perpetrated by it against Palestinian people since the nineteen forty-eight Nakba and since then the nineteen sixty-seven occupation. The legality of that occupation is now the subject of this matter before the Court. Mr. President, the Palestinian cause is one which resonates strongly with the people of South Africa. That is because the Palestinian struggle invokes mournful memories of our own struggle against apartheid, segregation and oppression. Ours is an experience which ours is an experience aptly referred to by the United Nations Security Council in nineteen eighty as a crime against the conscience and dignity of mankind and as being incompatible with the rights and dignity of men. It is not without a measure of irony that one notes that this painful experience of our past has enabled South Africa to make a significant contribution to the development of international law on apartheid. From this experience, a universal legal prohibition of its practice emerged in the form of a peremptory norm and an international crime. The norm against apartheid has become one of the most cited norms of use cogitants. We as South Africans sense, see, hear and feel to our core the inhumane discriminatory policies and practices of the Israeli regime as an even more extreme form of the apartheid that was institutionalised against black people in my country, coincidentally from the year nineteen forty-eight and which lasted until nineteen ninety-four. The late South African cleric, the Most Reverend Archbishop Desmond Tutu, wrote the following, open quote: "Many black South Africans have travelled to the occupied West Bank and have been appalled by Israeli roads built for Jewish settlers that West Bank Palestinians are denied access to and by Jewish-only colonies built on Palestinian land in violation of international law." "Black South Africans and others around the world have seen the twenty-ten Human Rights Watch report, which describes the two-tiered system of laws, rules and services that Israel operates for the two populations in areas in the West Bank under its exclusive control, which provide preferential services, developments and benefits for Jewish settlers while imposing harsh conditions on Palestinians. This, in my book, is apartheid. It is untenable," end quote. That was the position already fourteen years ago, since twenty-ten. Since then, the situation of the occupied Palestinian population has worsened exponentially, with the reality of apartheid becoming so obviously explicit as to now being recognised not only by South African and Palestinian victims of apartheid themselves, but by the broader international community, including both Israeli and international human rights organisations. Moreover, it is clear that Israel's illegal occupation is also being administered in breach of the prohibition of the crime of apartheid. It is indistinguishable from settler colonialism, which has no place in the twenty-first century. Israeli apartheid must end. Palestine, the last unfulfilled sacred trust of civilisation for whom the international community bears responsibility, must now be fulfilled. The Palestinian people must be permitted to exercise their inalienable right to self-determination. Mr. President, South Africa bears a special obligation, both to its own people and the international community, to ensure that wherever the egregious and offensive practices of apartheid occur, these must be called out for what they are and brought to an immediate end and that the perpetrators of such egregious breaches of peremptory norms of international law be held accountable. In the construction of wall case, this court held that the construction of the wall being built by Israel, the occupying power, in the occupied Palestinian territory, including in and around East Jerusalem and its associated regime, are contrary to international law and that Israel is under an obligation to dismantle forthwith the structure therein situated and to repeal or render ineffective forthwith all legislative and regulatory acts relating thereto. Despite that nineteen-year-old finding by the Court, today Palestinians in the West Bank, including many in East Jerusalem, continue to be contained behind a segregating wall. They continue to be subjected to discriminatory land zoning and planning policies, punitive and administrative house demolitions and violent Israeli army incursions into their villages, towns and cities and refugee camps, including Area A, which is supposed to be under full Palestinian control. Palestinians continue to be subjected to routine violent Israeli raids on their homes, with thousands of adults and children being subjected to unlawful arbitrary arrests by Israeli soldiers in the dead of night and indefinitely renewable internment without trial, known euphemistically as administrative detention and a dual legal system pursuant to which Palestinians, including Palestinian children, are tried under military legislation by military judges, often themselves illegal settlers, in Israeli military courts, without basic protection of international humanitarian and human rights law, while Israeli settlers living illegally in the same territory are subject to an entirely different legal regime and tried in Israeli civilian courts with full access to due process. Separately, Palestinians in Gaza have lived in a silt of enclaves, fragmented and segregated from the West Bank and subjected by Israel to regression, sustained closure and seized. Palestinian refugees and exiles in the diaspora are systematically denied their right to return to their homes. Apartheid, Israel discriminates against and fragments all Palestinian people to ensure the maintenance of Israeli Jewish domination. South Africa pursues this court to examine the institutionalised regime of discriminatory laws, policies and practices applied by Israel along the definition of the crime of apartheid and to find that Israel subjects Palestinians to what constitutes an apartheid regime. The clear legal characterisation of the nature of Israel's regime over the Palestinian people can only assist in remedying the ongoing delay in achieving a just settlement, a delay which perpetually conflates the cycle of violence. As I speak and for each of the past one hundred and thirty-six days, the world is witnessing in Gaza an assault that is unprecedented in speed and severity, violating the most basic precepts of the right to life and the survival of a population. The international community's unwillingness to hold Israel accountable for its policies and practices and its failure to ensure the immediate unconditional and total withdrawal of Israeli troops and an immediate end to Israel occupation and apartheid in Palestine, including Gaza, the West Bank and East Jerusalem, emboldens Israel to cross a further threshold, namely to commit the crime of crimes, genocide. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is now my honour to request you to invite Advocate Ando Stemet to the bar to submit South Africa's further observations on the questions referred to the Court by the UN General Assembly. Thank you.
I thank His Excellency Mr. Wuzi Muzi Madoncela. I now give the floor to Mr. Peter Andreas Stemet. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is an honour to appear before this honourable Court today on behalf of the Republic of South Africa. The request for an advisory opinion presents a critical opportunity to clarify and reconfirm the rules and principles of international law applying to the situation of Palestine and the Palestinian people. A clear legal assessment would assist the General Assembly and the broader international community to promote peace and justice, a key element of judicial propriety, at a time when a ferocious and unrestrained military assault has been launched by Israel on the Palestinians in Gaza, which this court has found may plausibly amount to genocide, threatening the very existence of the Palestinian people. In this submission, we do not intend to restate South Africa's arguments on why the Court has to assume jurisdiction, as this has been dealt with in some detail in our written statement. We will therefore focus on the Palestinian right to self-determination and the violation thereof by Israel, and then we will continue to submit our arguments on the legal consequences for Israel, the United Nations and third states. Mr. President, members of the Court, the right to self-determination, also called the Mahna Karta of decolonisation, is an established and inalienable right in and fundamental principle of international law. The respect for this principle is one of the purposes of the United Nations, Article One, Paragraph Two of the Charter. It has an erga omnes character owed to the international community as a whole, on which the Court has developed a strong and consistent jurisprudence. The inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and full independence has been recognised by the United Nations in numerous resolutions over the decades and the most recent General Assembly resolutions of December twenty-two-three once again recognise the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and the permanent sovereignty of the Palestinian people in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, over their natural resources. Self-determination accrues to a people and in its most recent Order of Twenty-sixth January twenty-two-four, in the matter of application of the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide in the Gaza Strip, South Africa versus Israel, the Court confirmed that the Palestinians constitute, and I quote, "a distinct national, ethnical, racial or religious group," end quote. Israel has occupied the Palestinian territory in the West Bank, Gaza and East Jerusalem since the nineteen sixty-seven Arab-Israeli war and annexed East Jerusalem and parts of the West Bank in that same year. It is not disputed that the acquisition of territory by the threat or use of force is illegal, irrespective of whether the territory was acquired through a war of self-defence or of an act of aggression. The occupying power cannot annex any part of the occupied territory and there is an obligation on states not to recognise such an illegal territorial acquisition. Moreover, that an occupation must also be temporary in nature was confirmed by the Court in the Namibia-South-West Africa case, where it held that the end of South Africa's mandate must be self-determination and independence of the people of Namibia. A fifty-six-year occupation is not temporary and annexation, per definition, cannot be temporary. These principles also apply to Palestine. The Security Council has already, in nineteen sixty-seven, in Resolution two-four-two, expressly emphasised the inadmissibility of the acquisition of territory by war and called for the withdrawal of Israeli armed forces. Furthermore, in the construction of a wall case, this Court unequivocally held that the ongoing construction of Israeli settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory is in breach of international law. However, it is clear that Israel has turned the temporary nature of the occupation into a permanent situation in violation of the Palestinian right to self-determination. It has done this through its illegal settlement enterprise, which now consists of an estimated seven hundred thousand settlers, an increase of two hundred and thirty-five percent since the Oslo Peace Accords and of one hundred and sixty-five percent since the wall opinion. That is notwithstanding that in the wall case, this Court unequivocally held that the ongoing construction of Israeli settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory is in breach of international law. In that case, the Court found that Israel has taken measures that, and I quote, "severely impeded the exercise by the Palestinian people of their right to self-determination," unquote, in breach of that fundamental right. The very disruption of Palestinian territorial integrity resulting from those settlements as well as Israel's formal and de facto annexation of parts of the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, constitute further violations of that fundamental right. General Assembly Resolution fifteen-fourteen of nineteen sixty declares in Paragraph Six as follows, and I quote, "Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations," unquote. The Court, in its advisory opinion on legal consequences of the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius in nineteen sixty-five, held that their resolution fifteen-fourteen has the status of customary international law and hence is binding on all states, including Israel. Mr. President, members of the Court, turning now to the nature of the Israeli administration of the occupied Palestinian territory, it is tried law that Israel as the occupying power is bound by both international humanitarian law and international human rights law in its administration of the occupied Palestinian territory. The basic objective of international humanitarian law applicable to occupation is the protection of the population under occupation, including their safety and security and their public and private property. As the record of the past half-century makes clear, Israel as the occupying power is not acting in the best interests of the population under occupation and is not administering the occupied territory in good faith, breaching multiple use cogits norms of international law, including the prohibitions on annexation, self-determination, apartheid and genocide, on which I have focused. In terms of international humanitarian law, the continuing construction and expansion of Israeli settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory are in clear violation of Article forty-nine of the Fourth Geneva Convention, to which Israel is a party and which the Court has found in the wall case to be binding upon Israel. In terms of international human rights law, this Court confirmed in the wall case that the protection offered by human rights conventions does not cease in cases of armed conflict, except under specific and very defined derogation principles, while it also established law that the human rights law obligations of a state also apply in situations over which such state has control. Mr. President, members of the Court, Ambassador Madoncela has dealt in some detail with the practices of apartheid perpetrated by Israel against the Palestinian people, including as the occupying power in the occupied Palestinian territory. But at this juncture, it's also appropriate to recall that the Court held in the Namibia-South-West Africa case that to establish and enforce distinctions, exclusions, restrictions and limitations exclusively based on the grounds of race, colour, descent or national or ethnic origin constitute a denial of fundamental rights and is a flagrant violation of the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter. The extent of human rights violations and discriminatory laws and practices by Israel with respect to the Palestinian population is well documented in various reports of the treaty-based and charter-based mechanisms of the United Nations and is recalled in the resolutions of the Security Council and the General Assembly. These policies and practices have reached the threshold of apartheid within the meaning ascribed to it in the International Convention on the suppression and punishment of the crime of apartheid. While Israel is not a party to the apartheid convention, the fourth report on peremptory norms of general international law use cogits by the International Law Commission Special Rapporteur found that the apartheid convention codified what was already a crime under customary international law and that this crime has a use cogits character. The prohibition of apartheid and racial discrimination is therefore a peremptory norm of international law and binding on all states, including Israel. Mr. President, members of the Court, Israel's total disdain and their disrespect for these principles result in the occupation being inherently and fundamentally illegal in terms of international law, just as South Africa's prolonged presence in Namibia was found by this Court to be illegal. Mr. President, members of the Court, further to a finding of illegality, the General Assembly also seeks guidance on the wider consequences of such a finding. We now turn to the legal consequences for Israel, the United Nations and third states. The continued occupation by Israel and the Palestinian territory, of the Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, as well as the aforementioned violation of peremptory norms of international law, are breaches of international obligations constituting internationally wrongful acts attributable to Israel and which invoke the law of state responsibility. The law of state responsibility provides that the state responsible for an internationally wrongful act is under an obligation to seize such act and to make reparations in an adequate form, as confirmed by this Court's Petey Sessler in the factory at Ghor Joffe case. In the present case, the aforementioned principles of international law require that Israel must bring an immediate, unconditional and complete end to the occupation in all its manifestations. This means that Israel must immediately seize its illegal settlement activities and all measures aimed at altering the character, status and demographic composition of the occupied Palestinian territories and dismantle illegal structures, including the settlements and the wall. Furthermore, it must immediately, unconditionally and totally withdraw its occupation forces from the occupied Palestinian territory, dismantle the settler-colonial apartheid regime against Palestinian people, rescinding all legislative measures adopted with a view to annex Palestinian land and discriminate against the Palestinian people, allowing for the full restitution of Palestinian property and for the right to self-determination of the Palestinian people to be finally realised. The United Nations, especially the Security Council and General Assembly, must in all their engagements and actions on the issue of Palestine be guided by the imperative of the implementation of the sacrosanct Palestinian right to self-determination. To this end, these organs must use all measures within their powers to bring an immediate end to the unlawful Israeli occupation of the Palestinian territory. of the Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. The United Nations should also remain seized of the matter and continuously monitor implementation of any order that the court may give to end the racial discrimination and apartheid by Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, to ensure that the illegal situation is terminated immediately and to ensure that their resolutions are implemented without delay. Urgent considerations should also be given in particular to the re-establishment of the Special Committee on Apartheid with respect to the occupied Palestinian territory that will be seized with this matter. Third states must immediately act with a view to end, through all lawful means and measures, the annexation by Israel of parts of the occupied Palestinian territory and East Jerusalem and refrain from rendering assistance or aid in any form to Israel for the maintenance of the situation. Third states have a positive obligation not to recognize Israel's continued occupation and presence in the occupied Palestinian territory, as these are breaches of Hughes-Coggins norms of international law. That obligation, far too long ignored, must now urgently be implemented. Mr. President, members of the court, the failure of the international community to act decisively to end the illegal occupation and annexation of Palestinian territory and the settler colonialism, apartheid practices and continuous human rights violations perpetrated by Israel against the Palestinian people as the occupying power across Gaza, the West Bank, including East Jerusalem, form the broader context and the root causes of Israel's current military onslaught on Gaza that has already claimed the lives of an estimated 30,000 Palestinian civilians and has resulted in widespread destruction and a catastrophic humanitarian situation. Mr. President, honourable members of the court, it is often said that the right to life is the font from which all other rights flow. The same could be said about the right to self-determination. In the absence of self-determination, it is impossible for a people to realize a plethora of other rights. These advisory proceedings present this honourable court with the opportunity to assist in bringing about the immediate and unconditional end to the ongoing unlawful violation of the Palestinian right to self-determination. Mr. President, distinguished members of the court, this brings to an end the idle submission by South Africa. I wish to thank the court for your attention. Thank you.
I thank the delegation of South Africa for its presentation.
I invite the next delegation, Algeria, to address the court and call Professor Ahmed Larabat to the podium. Sir, you have the floor.
Mr. President, members of the court, I have the honour of presenting the oral presentation of my country, the Democratic and People's Algerian Republic, as part of the advisory proceedings pertaining to the request of the UN General Assembly of the 30th of December 2022. I shall do this with the benefit of the following few remarks. The two questions posed by the General Assembly successively pertain to, I quote, "the legal consequences of the persistent violation by Israel of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, of its occupation, its colonization and its prolonged annexation", end of quote, and I quote once again, "the consequences arising from the policies and practices of Israel on the status of occupation and the legal consequences that flow from them for all states and the United Nations Organization." The key word of the UN resolution is that of occupation. It is abundantly cited, both in its preamble as well as in its operative paragraph inter alia. It is the only term to be found in the two questions posed by the General Assembly. Such an importance should come as no surprise because the prolonged occupation of Palestinian territories is the central point of their situation that has considerably deteriorated in every respect these past few months. It is the reason why Algeria will begin by addressing briefly the non-existence of compelling reasons not to respond to the General Assembly's request. That's the first point. And then it will focus on reviewing the manifestation of prolonged occupations of Palestinian territories and their consequence on its legal status, second major point. This examination leads to the acknowledgement of a continuous, gradual and extreme violation of the rules and principles of international law underscored by the UN General Assembly Resolution. And lastly, final point, the legal consequences for all states and the organization of the United Nations on the non-existence of compelling reasons. In substance, four arguments were rehearsed. There's first of all the principle known as the circumvention of the absence of consent to the court's jurisdiction, first point. The existence of factual evidence, second point. The conflict that exists between this request and the existence of a negotiating framework, third point. And lastly, the absence of aim and purpose of the request. Algeria recalls that these have been constantly discarded by the court, notably in its opinions of 2004 and 2019, to mention but two of the most recent ones. There's no circumvention of the absence of consent to the court's jurisdiction, constantly invoked in advisory proceedings, notably in that pertaining to the unlawfulness of the construction of the wall in 2004. This argument has quite constantly been discarded by the court. As the High Court declared on a number of occasions, the possibility of the existence of a concomitant bilateral dispute to an advisory proceeding is in the nature of things in this regard. It would be hard to find further reasons that might legally justify the reiteration of this argument. Second point, that we can turn the factual question. This argument is also a classic one, regularly put forward to invite the court to refuse to accede to a request for an advisory opinion. The court has always refused this. It notably declared in paragraph 58 of its 2004 opinion that, and I quote, "The circumstance that others may evaluate and interpret these facts in a subjective or political manner can be no argument for a court of law to abdicate its judicial task", end of quote. On the third argument, that pertaining to the existence of a negotiating framework, another major classic in this regard, the existence of a negotiating framework put in place by the Oslo Accords was once again put forward in order to invite the court not to accede to the request of the General Assembly. The court took clearly a position in paragraph 53 of its 2004 opinion by declaring that participants to the proceedings expressed in this regard divergent views and the court, and I quote, "cannot regard this factor as a compelling reason to decline to exercise its jurisdiction", end of quote. On the absence of aim and purpose of the request of the General Assembly, this argument that of the absence of aim and purpose is not new either. Here again, the court should not accede to it. We can notably refer to paragraph 60 of its advisory opinion of 2004, where the court rejected it by stating, and I quote, "As it emerges from the court's jurisprudence, advisory opinions serve to supply the organs that request the elements of a legal character that are necessary as part of their activities", end of quote. It added in paragraph 62 that, and I quote, "The court cannot decline to answer the question posed based on the ground that its opinion would lack any useful purpose. The court cannot substitute its assessment of the usefulness of the opinion requested for that of the organ that seeks such opinion", namely the General Assembly, end of quote. At the same time, that brings to an end the first part of the presentation. Part two, the manifestations and consequences of prolonged occupation of Palestinian territories. And firstly, observations on the occupation of Palestinian territories. It's an ambiguous notion, if ever there was one, because located in theory at an intermediate stage between war and peace, the notion of occupation found its basis in Article 42 of the Hague Rule of 1907, whose customary notion is not contested, as the court recalls in paragraph 89 of its opinion on the construction of the wall. Without dwelling on the legal regime of occupation, it is important to highlight with a broad brush its most fundamental aspects. In substance, occupation was originally devised in a context that needs to be underscored in which there did not yet exist the principle prohibiting the use of force. It was devised as a temporary regime in which the occupying power, as we know, does not exercise its sovereignty. One may inter alia underscore that it was devised to manage temporary situations between the end of hostilities and the conclusion of peace treaties. It would almost suggest a peaceful relationship between occupier and occupied, regarding which the idea of prolonged occupation was totally inconceived by the drafters of the time. It's the reason why the right of occupation addresses neither the question of its prolongation nor, with stronger reason, that of its permanency. The multiplication of armed conflicts has brought about new forms of occupation. The realities are far more complex and the state's contemporary doctrine, as the ICRC regularly question certain deficiencies of the law of the years 1907 and 1949. The Palestinian situation is a striking illustration of the violent contrast that exists between theoretical appearances that have just been sketched out with a very broad brush and the reality. Algeria considers that the situation created in 1948 and continued to show up starkly the misuse and abuse of the concept of occupation by Israel in occupied Palestinian territories. Israel's goal is to reach a point of no return in order to discard all possibility of the creation of a Palestinian state. This objective has several forms, decided on the basis of situations specific to each part of occupied Palestinian territory. That's to say, East Jerusalem, the West Bank and the Gaza Strip. And so, occupation is becoming, if it hasn't already become so, an avatar of former legal techniques that expressed each in their own way the right of power. Second point after those brief observations, the colonization of East Jerusalem and the West Bank and the situation in the Gaza Strip, first corollary of prolonged occupation. In the three parts of Palestinian territory, we find the same policy and the same practice that we can summarize with the formula of fact against law. In East Jerusalem, with the war of 1948, the UN Plan for Partition, Resolution 181 by the General Assembly was first stopped in its tract and the fait accompli, illustrated by the occupation of the western part of Jerusalem by Israel in violation of Resolution 181, at the same time by the adoption of legislative and administrative measures, including expropriation after the 1967 war. Israel began to apply its domestic law with the application but not exclusively, the adoption of two laws adopted on the same day, 27th of June 1967. This policy will be strengthened even further with the law dated 30th of July 1980, making Jerusalem the capital, I quote, "full and reunified of Israel", but in fact it should be characterized as de jure annexational. I'll return to that. The law of 27th of November 20 amended it with a view to consolidating it even further, and I quote, "to prohibit the transfer of all form of government power", end of quote. This law of 2000 was once again amended in 2018 to strengthen its scope even further. So, fait accompli, on the one hand, followed by the establishment of Israeli legal rules in the West Bank. Here again, two successive phases. Planned military occupation is followed by the beginning of colonization with the building of hundreds of settlements and the displacement and confinement of the Palestinian people as well as the destruction of their buildings. The most striking feature in the West Bank resides in the spectacular increase in the establishment of settlements between 2012 and 22. The numbers went from 520,000 settlers to 700,000. That's quite dizzying a figure. And the consequences were of several orders to... And the consequences were of several orders, to move the human beings and also to displace as well as confine the Palestinian people. And last but not least, the construction of infrastructure and the exploitation of natural resources. All historians of colonization stressed the compelling importance of the dispossession of land in establishing and accelerating colonization. That of Algeria is a particularly striking example. As to Gaza, third point, the Israeli withdrawal of the Gaza Strip in two thousand and five was immediately followed by the blockade and four large-scale military operations, of which the latest is ongoing. How can we focus on the fate of Gaza without evoking the current situation? The facts, first of all, in truth, they speak for themselves and the images speak volumes, res ipsa loquitur. Next, figures that are overtaken the day after their announcement over almost thirty thousand dead and twice as many wounded, the destruction of almost half of all essential infrastructure goes hand in hand with famine, lack of water, really below the minimum level of necessities. The situation of Rafah is the latest preoccupation of the international community and international organizations. Its gravity is due to the latest plan by Israel to Lord Jalas scale military operation of civilian population of one point four million people stunned and buffeted Gaza Strip that devastated for a long time. And paraphrasing Cato, the elder obsessed by Carthage, whose leitmotif was the term "cartigo delanda", as we can say today that Gaza destructum est. On annexation, annexation is the second corollary of prolonged occupation, the first being colonization. The legal consequences stemming from the dramatic developments of prolonged occupation raises the question of the development of the latter. It's not a new question. It is evoked, sometimes suggested, sometimes frankly considered after every war, notably by Israel. But over and above that, the situation of prolonged occupation since nineteen sixty-seven imposes inevitably in the debate. In its resolution of the UN, the General Assembly expressly referred to the impact of Israeli policies and practices on the legal status of occupation. Regarding the court's jurisprudence, Algeria would recall that in its advisory opinion of nineteen fifty on the international status of southwest Africa, and as I quote, where it was expressing itself generally on the mandates, and I quote the court, "the court had underscored that two principles was deemed as of paramount importance", and I quote, "that of non-annexation", paragraph one three one of that opinion. Algeria recalls next the paragraph one two one of the opinion on the two thousand and four war. The court felt that the construction of the wall and the regime associated there too creates on the ground a fait accompli, fait accompli in inverted commas, creates on the ground a fait accompli, that might well become permanent, in which case, and notwithstanding the official description that Israel gives of the wall, the construction of this wall would be tantamount to de facto annexation. In, end of quote, in this excerpt, the court considers first of all that the construction of the wall and its legal regime are fait accomplis. It then refers to the possibility of their permanency. And it concludes by using the conditional that this, the permanence, would transform the occupation regime into de facto annexation. In other words, it's the permanence that conditions the passage from occupation to de facto annexation. So inevitably, this refers to the question of the duration. And we know, as we saw earlier, international law of occupation remains silence. The notion of permanence must be assessed in light of the factual context of the situation two thousand and four that the court set out. And in paragraph sixty-nine of the opinion, the court referred to structures built or under construction specifying further, and I quote, "that the Israeli Council of Ministers on the twenty-third of June two thousand and two approved the first construction phase", that's to be found in paragraph eighty, and that the construction of the wall was accompanied by the establishment of a new administrative regime, end of quote. And so one can better understand the prudent wording of paragraph one two one in two thousand and four, it was still permitted and legitimate to ask about the completion of the construction of the works, given the date two thousand and four, and a possible felicitous outcome of the negotiating process. Such prudence can, with difficulty, still be applied when the construction of the wall has continued and the regime associated with it was consolidated. This situation had wall and its legal regime. Similarly, it is possible to question and ask about the legal regime of the West Bank, that its prolonged occupation has been ongoing for fifty-seven years. And the West Bank prolonged occupation with its construction of settlement and destruction has led to de facto annexation. It is in the nature of things, alas, that colonizations, destructions, constructions are not destined to be temporary. In this regard, we can recall the conclusions of the International Independent Commission tasked by the General Assembly to investigate the occupied Palestinian territories in September two thousand and two, noted acts tantamount to annexation. The continuous gradual extreme violations of relevant international law and obstacle to the creation of a Palestinian state. Three areas to briefly address here. Firstly, the violation of the right to self-determination, an ergo omnus paramount rule. One could have recalled the various stages of the legal development of this law. It was done so on several occasions, in the written submissions, the written observations, and up until yesterday in Palestine's oral presentation. Both the Charter as well as Resolution fifteen fourteen eighteen oh four and the jurisprudence of the court of its successive opinions of Namibia in seventy-one, Western Sahara in seventy-five contributed to this. And of course, particular contribution must be on East Timor of nineteen ninety-five, because that's where the court considered that the right of the people is enforceable ergo omnus. No need to stress that the International Law Commission enshrined the right to self-determination amongst the imperative laws at the end of its work devoted to the imperative laws in twenty nineteen. Extended prolocution, the source of unlimited international law and international human rights law. Israeli policies and practices violated the most fundamental aspects of these two branches of international law. It would truly be pretentious to have us believe in the remaining time to give a broad spectrum of all these violations. I think we can refer here to the previous submissions by Algeria, but also those of Palestine, including those delivered yesterday. On the legal consequences now for Israel, it is under obligation to put an end to violations of international law, is has a duty to repair all the harm suffered by the Palestinian people and also under obligation to deliver on all the obligations that are violated and to repair the harm and for the other states, not to recognize the situation created by this, not to render assistance to Israel. A number of recent events that show the question of not rendering assistance to Israel is beginning to take shape for the UN, for the General Assembly and the Security Council. The aim is to increase the decisions. In general conclusion, Mr. President, ladies judges of the court, Algeria is profoundly convinced that impunity is the fourth law of oppressors. Your duty is to tell them there is a law and this law must be upheld, that this law is not a law of vengeance but of justice. It's in that spirit that Algeria repeats the requests made in its previous submissions. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the court.
I would thank the Algerian delegation.
Participating delegation Saudi Arabia to address the court, I call upon His Excellency, Mr. Ziyad Al-Ghathia, to take the floor.
Mr. President, members of the courts, it's a great honor for me to appear before you, to present my country's position on a matter of utmost importance of all states and the United Nations. In my remarks today, I will expand on a few critical points made in our written statement and address at the outset one matter that postdated our submission but which is impossible to ignore when considering the questions before the court. That matter is, of course, Israel's military aggression against Gaza and its increasing active violence directed against the Palestinian population of the West Bank, including East Jerusalem since October twenty twenty-three. I believe I speak in consonance with virtually the entire international community in suppressing the kingdom's profound revulsion and condemnation of the horrendous death, destruction and displacement of Palestinian civilians brought about by Israel's illegal and brutal war in Gaza and the notorious increase in Israeli aggression, impunity and international law violations in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem since October twenty twenty-three. Israel defends this obscene brutality as the necessary price for defeating Hamas. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia firmly rejects this twisted logic. Israel's actions in laying waste to the Gaza Strip, killing and maiming tens of thousands of innocent civilians, depriving them of food, water and the basic means of survival, while displacing virtually the entire population of the two point three million people are not justified under any circumstances. Israel's actions have severely dehumanized the Palestinian population, treating them as dispensable objects rather than human beings. These disgraceful acts, which have brought about formal accusation before this esteemed court that Israel is committing genocide against the Palestinian population, as well as an order of professional majors recognizing the plausibility of those accusations and ordering Israel to comply with its obligations under the Genocide Convention, necessarily weigh heavily up in the consideration of the questions before the court in this proceeding. For if nothing else, they demonstrate all too vividly how the illegality of the Israeli occupation of for more than five decades can degenerate into the ugliest of consequences. A final point I wish to highlight at the outset is that of all written statements submitted before this court, not one state has sought to defend the legality of Israel's policies and the practices in the occupied Palestinian territory. This is a telling acknowledgment of the international community's unanimous recognition of the illegality which befails that occupation. Israel itself does not attempt to defend the substance of its policies and practices, as the court will have observed. Its five-base submission does not, no doubt, because it cannot say anything with effort about the substantive allegations made against it. Instead, it focuses almost entirely on why the request of the advisory opinion and the questions contained therein are somehow improper. The only logical conclusion that can be drawn from all of this is that Israel's policies and the practices in the occupied Palestinian territory are legally indefensible. This brings me to the next part of my statement. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia submits that the court has jurisdiction to issue their opinion and there are no compellig reason for it not to do so. To the contrary, given the recent increase in bloodshed and destruction by Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, as well as the dangerous statements made at the highest levels of the Israeli government, we respectively submit that the court is under a duty to issue its opinion. I will now discuss the arguments advanced by some states that the court should not issue the opinion for two primary reasons. First, because the opinion might prejudice a negotiation process aimed at resolving the Israeli Palestinian conflict, which those states considers to be ongoing. And second, because the questions posed concern a bilateral dispute between Israel and Palestine. Not only are those arguments misguided, but they have been repeatedly rejected by this esteemed court under highly analogous circumstances, including in the wall advisory opinion. The kingdom regards the first argument as being based on a blatantly false premise and devoid of any legal foundation. Its lack of legal credibility has been addressed by the leak of Arab states in its October twenty twenty-three comments. In the interest of time, I would respectively direct that the court's attention to those comments, which we fully endorse. Simply but, the court's barrier practice should be failed in this instance. The practice gives deference to the General Assembly, where requesting guidance from the court and issue the assembly, and in an issue the assembly considers relevant to its work. the court in an issue the Assembly considers relevant to its work. As the following demonstrates, the assumption that a serious negotiation process exists is a fiction that affords reality. In the two thousand and four wall proceedings, the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia described Israel's modus operandi in the occupied Palestinian territory since nineteen sixty-seven as, quote, "deliberately enhancing its position and changing the territorial status quo to its benefits," end of quote. The court rightly recognized this reality in its advisory opinion, referring to the illegality of Israeli settlement practices in the occupied Palestinian territory. The court also warned, quote, "The construction of the wall and its associated regime create a fatal combustion on the ground that could become permanent, in which case it would be tantamount to the effect of annexation," end of the court. This assessment was precedent and tragically, but predictably resulted in no change in Israel's illegal conduct. Now here is this seen more clearly than in the number of legal settlers residing in the occupied Palestinian territory, which has grown from roughly four hundred to twenty-four thousand in two thousand and four to some seven hundred thousand settler today. Since nineteen sixty-seven, far from engaging in negotiations, Israel has made it virtually impossible to establish a cohesive Palestinian states. It has done so by annexing more than two million units of land, building more than two hundred seventy-nine illegal settlements throughout the West Bank, illegally annexing East Jerusalem and declaring Jerusalem as its undivided capital, confiscating natural resources, demolishing Palestinian homes and much more. Those actions are well documented in the many UN reports discussed in the kingdom's written statement, and I will not dwell on them further except to make the self-evident point that the Israeli's actions have clearly aimed at frustrating a negotiated settlement rather than the opening the door to a such settlement. These policies and the practices should be enough to dismantle the illusion that Israel has any intention of engaging in serious efforts towards a negotiated peace. But Israel has also, for good measure, approached actual negotiations with nothing less than impunity and contempt. Mr. President, members of the court, we see this not as spectators but as a direct participant, an effort towards negotiating a lasting peace spanning decades. That was the case when more than twenty years ago, the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia proposed the Arabic initiatives, which was adopted by the Arab League in two thousand and two and re-endorsed at the two thousand and seven and two thousand and seventeen Arab League summits. However, this basic initiative was rejected outright by Israel, with its then Prime Minister describing it as an un-starter, because it required Israel to forego occupied territories in exchange for peace, a policy that has resisted until today. The reality today has become more discouraging. At the senior levels of the Israeli government's calls are openly made to forcibly transfer or ethnically cleanse Palestinians out of their homeland, expand settlements even further, annex further areas of the West Bank and at all costs to reject the notion of establishing a Palestinian state along the lines of the two-state solutions. And while the brutal and genocidal onslaught of Gaza by the Israeli military since October twenty twenty-three has led it to become, in the words of the United Nations Under-Secretary General for Humanitarian Affairs, "a place of death and despair." It should not be forgotten that Israel's aggression has been accompanied by unyielding statements by its leaders that it will never agree to a sovereign Palestinian state or seize control over the occupied Palestinian territory. Such a statement hurriedly reflects Israel's intention to engage in a genuine peace negotiations. Concluding at this point, I would add that if a serious negotiations aimed at achieving a just resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian dispute in accordance with international law were to become reality, the court's opinion could not in any case possibly bridge this, those discussions, but rather would enlighten them. Mr. President, members of the court, the second argument raised by certain states is that the court should refrain from rendering the requested opinion because it relates to a strictly bilateral matter between Israel and Palestine. This argument has been rejected by the courts in sephial barrier contexts, including in the World Advisory Opinion, and should, we believe, be disposed of by the court in the same manner in this case. Not only is the argument legally unfounded, but the fact that the questions posed to the court are of a multilateral nature is self-evident. As explained in the kingdom's written statement, the legal questions are located in a broader context, on full erga omnis applications and just cogent norms, and ask about the consequences of Israeli's policies and practices in all states as well as the United Nations. To conclude on the question of the court jurisdiction, I have with one thought that the kingdom also foists in the context of the World Advisory Opinion. If this court, the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, should not consider the critical questions put before it, then we cannot but conclude that the system to maintain international peace and security set up following the atrocities of the Second World War has not stood the test of time. Mr. President, members of the courts, I will now address the first questions before the court, which concerns the legal consequences arising from Israel's prolonged occupation and the legal policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory. To answer the questions, the court has a plethora of evidence available. This includes the evidence furnished by the United Nations, its organs, UN Human Rights Mandate Holders and the Special Idiages, the Special Robertoors and the Independent Commission, all available in the dossier before this court or referred to in the kingdom's written statement. We submit that the catastrophic consequences of Israeli's policies and practices in the ground as well as their sheer illegality are undeniable. The international community has seen stark evidence of these consequences during the current war in Gaza. The ongoing situation is so appalling that last December, the UN General Assembly overwhelmingly passed a resolution demanding an immediate humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza, while the court has recognized the plausibility that Israel's conduct amounts to a genocide and ordered it to comply with a series of professional measures. However, as we speak, Israel continues to defy the international community's call for a ceasefire and to willfully ignore the professional measures ordered by the court. More generally, Israel has offered the decades of its occupation, resisted egregious violations of its most fundamental international obligations, as explained in our written statement. Israel, in continuous breach of sephial just cogent norms, notwithstanding multiple Security Council and General Assembly resolutions condemning its conduct and this court's finding in the World Advisory Opinion. These violations include Israel taking continuous measures to prevent the Palestinian people from exercising their right of self-defense through various policies and practices, including, among others, the illegal settlement practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, the expulsion of Palestinians from their homes and theft of Palestinians' property, the denial of sovereignty over their natural resources and the breach of their civil, political, economic, social and cultural rights. Moreover, Israel has continued implementing its infamous settlement practice in the occupied Palestinian territory, despite the repeated condemnation of this practice by the Security Council and this court's determination of their illegality in the World Advisory Opinion. Yet, Israel makes no secret of its intention to maintain and expand settlements, as well as its possession of all or part of the occupied Palestinian territory, in violation of the Fourth Geneva Convention and the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by the use of force. Israel's two thousand and eighteen Basic Law also shows Israel's disdain for the Palestinian people's right to self-determination by declaring the holy city of Jerusalem complete and united as Israel's capital, stipulating that, quote, "The exercise of the right to national self-determination in the state of Israel is unique to the Jewish people," end of the quote. It's also incompatible with the Palestinian people's right to self-determination in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. The international community has spoken on these issues on many occasions through the United Nations' principal bodies, demanding that Israel completely seizes all settlement activities, refocus its annexation of East Jerusalem and comply with its international obligations in other respects. The list of resolutions is long. We have addressed many of them in our written statements. Israel continues to ignore them. But Israel's breaches of international law don't end there. There can be no serious debate that Israel's policies and practices also amount to the racial discrimination and are tantamount to apartheid in the grave violations of the Palestinian people's human rights. Israel's seizure of land and resources for Israeli settlers and discriminatory application of laws, regulations to the detriment of the Palestinian people are merely examples of this egregious conduct. Israel violates the human rights of the Palestinian people in multiple other ways and in breach of its conventional obligations, including the rights of women and children. Mr. President, members of the court, the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia wishes to emphasize that the international law obligations, particularly those embodied in the preemptory norms of general international law, are not abstract rules and are not intended to be. Their violations entail particular legal consequences, but also has real and tangible consequences. The latter include, most prominently, the denial to human beings of the right to life and dignity, and more widely, the creation of threats to peace and stability with unpredictable consequences. The multiple and grave violations by Israel of its international obligations in the occupied Palestinian territory is therefore of undeniable concern, not only to those directly affected, but also to the international community as a whole. I will now move on to the second question before the court regarding the manner by which Israel's conduct affects the legal status of its occupation. The kingdom respectively submits that the only conclusion which we may be reached from the multiple and grave breaches of international law emanating from its occupation is that Israel's occupation itself is illegal and must be brought to an unconditional end. Any other conclusion would be anomalous and inconsistent with the clearly illegal origin and conduct of the occupation, including the violations of just cogent norms that Israel has and continues to engage in through its occupation. To be clear, Israel's occupation was, from its commencement in nineteen sixty-seven, an illegal use of force and continues to be so. The kingdom noted this in its submission in the World Advisory Opinion. The illegal nature of the fifty-six-year occupation has only been aggravated by Israel's numerous other international violations, including just cogent norms. Given the illegality surrounding every aspect of Israel's occupation, that occupation is simply indefensible as a matter of international law. For those reasons, we respectively ask the court to expressly declare that Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territory is illegal. The court is also asked to address the legal consequences of Israel's breaches. I will address this briefly. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia and numerous other states have laid out in their written statement the legal obligations which flow from Israel's breaches pursuant to Article thirty of the Articles on State Responsibility. And as explained by this court in the World Advisory Opinion, Israel must seize its wrongful conduct, resume compliance with its obligations and offer appropriate assurances and guarantees of non-repetition. Article thirty-one and thirty-six also require that Israel makes full reparations for the damage caused over the decades of its illegal occupation. As for all other states, Israel breaches of just cogent norms entails that the international community has an obligation not to recognize that illegal conduct. All states might also cooperate to bring Israel's violations of international law to an end and make sure that they don't render aid or assistance in furtherance of Israel's breaches. The consequences for the United Nations are clear. All UN organs must, within their competences, take steps to bring Israel's violations to an end, and they must also refrain from recognizing these violations or giving aid or assistance to maintain the illegal situation. Finally, they must also require the unconditional and immediate end to the occupation itself. Mr. President, members of the court, thank you for your attention. This concludes the statement of the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia.
Before I invite the next delegation to make its oral statement, the court will observe a coffee break for ten minutes. The sitting is suspended. Please be seated. The sitting is resumed. I now call upon the delegation of the Netherlands. I now call upon the delegation of the Netherlands to address the Court and invite Mr. Reni to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is an honor to appear before you today on behalf of the Kingdom of the Netherlands to participate in this hearing on the request for an advisory opinion on the legal consequences arising from the policies and practices of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. Let me express my sincere appreciation for this opportunity to speak early in this hearing as the other participants have not had an opportunity to comment on our views in writing. The Kingdom would like to begin by underlining that, for the purposes of the present advisory proceedings, it leaves it to the discretion of the Court to satisfy itself that it has advisory jurisdiction and that it may exercise this jurisdiction with respect to the present request in accordance with Article 65, paragraph one of the Statute of the Court and Article 102 of the Rules of Court. The Kingdom would like to emphasize that it considers that, and I quote from the advisory opinion on the construction of a wall, "The object of the request before the Court is to obtain from the Court an opinion which the General Assembly deems of assistance to it for the proper exercise of its functions," unquote. Therefore, the request should be regarded in a much broader frame of reference than a bilateral dispute. And it is with such broader frame of reference in mind that the Kingdom seeks to assist the Court in answering the questions contained in the request through the identification of the applicable international law and the presentation of the legal opinion of the Kingdom on the status and interpretation of that law. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, the Kingdom would now like to turn to the questions posed in the present request for an advisory opinion. Mr. President, according to the Kingdom, the right of self-determination of peoples is a permanent, continuing, universal and inelienable right with a peremptory character. The principle of self-determination of peoples is enshrined in Articles 1 and 55 of the United Nations Charter. It is also contained in several resolutions of the General Assembly with historical importance, such as Resolution 1514, which states that, and I quote, "All peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue the economic, social and cultural development," unquote. The right of self-determination has been reaffirmed by the General Assembly in Resolution 2625, pursuant to which every state has the duty to refrain from any forcible action which deprives peoples referred to in that resolution of their right to self-determination. In addition, this right is enshrined in Article 1, common to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights and the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights. The Court has acknowledged self-determination as a right of peoples in the Namibia Advisory Opinion, the Western Sahara Advisory Opinion, the East Timor case, the Advisory Opinion on the Construction of a Wall and the Advisory Opinion on the Separation of the Chagos Archipelago. In the East Timor case, the Court observed that the right of peoples to self-determination is a right erga omnes. The status of the right of self-determination as a right under customary international law is thus beyond reproach. According to the Kingdom, the right of self-determination is applicable in the colonial and in the post-colonial context. The right is, however, equally applicable to peoples under foreign or alien occupation, as confirmed by the General Assembly on several occasions, such as in Resolution 51/84 and its Millennium Declaration. It appears that the right of self-determination is a truly universal and continuing right. It applies to peoples under colonial domination, peoples residing in occupied territory and peoples living in independent states. As a result, a state that occupies territory is under an obligation to respect and promote the right of self-determination of peoples residing in that territory. The obligation to respect and promote the right of self-determination means that, on the one hand, the occupying state shall refrain from measures that impede the exercise of the right of self-determination of the people concerned during the occupation and, on the other hand, that the occupying state shall take measures aimed at creating the conditions under which the people concerned is able to freely and genuinely express its will in regard of its future political status. As the Kingdom has observed earlier, under international law, a distinction must be made between situations in which the right of self-determination is exercised in a manner that preserves international boundaries, which can be referred to as internal self-determination, or in a manner that involves a change of international boundaries, often referred to as external self-determination. In the context of colonial domination or foreign occupation, the right of self-determination can be realized through independence, association or integration. A prolonged occupation obstructs the implementation of the right of external self-determination of a people residing in the occupied territory concerned. In regard of, amongst others, peoples under foreign or alien occupation, the General Assembly reaffirmed in Resolution 45/130, and I quote, "the legitimacy of the struggle of peoples for independence, territorial integrity, national unity and liberation from colonial domination, apartheid and foreign occupation by all available means, including armed struggle," unquote. If a struggle by a people for the implementation of its right of self-determination in the context of colonial domination or foreign occupation is accompanied by the use of armed force by such people, this use of armed force must be in accordance with international Mr. President, I will now address the law regulating the use of force, in particular the UN Charter and its prohibition on the use of force by states contained in Article 2, paragraph 4. According to the Kingdom, the prohibition of the use of force is a rule of Just Cogan's that applies erga omnes. Indeed, in the Advisory Opinion on the Construction of a Wall, the Court confirmed that the principles as to the use of force incorporated in the UN Charter reflect customary international law. In 1966, the International Law Commission noted that the law of the UN Charter concerning the prohibition of the use of force in itself constitutes a conspicuous example of a rule of international law having the character of Just Cogan's. Consequently, the International Law Commission included the prohibition of Agestion in its list of rules of Just Cogan's. One of the established exceptions to the prohibition on the use of armed force is that of the inherent right of individual or collective self-defense if an armed attack occurs against a state, as qualified in Article 51 of the UN Charter. The occupation of foreign territory can be legitimate in the exercise of the right of self-defense in response to an armed attack, provided that the use of force is exercised in accordance with the conditions attached to this right. The substantive customary conditions are necessity and proportionality, in addition to the procedural condition contained in Article 51 to notify the Security Council of the actions taken in self-defense. In the Advisory Opinion on the legality of the threat or use of nuclear weapons, the Court noted, inter alia, that proportionality and necessity are inherent in the very concept of self-defense. So if the placement of a territory under the control of an armed force is the result of a military operation in the exercise of the right of self-defense, necessity requires an assessment of whether the occupation and the continuation thereof is necessary to repel the armed attack or that alternative courses of action are available. This inherently supposes also a temporal element of immediacy. If the right of self-defense is not exercised relatively promptly, it may imply that the exercise of the right of self-defense was unnecessary. Furthermore, with regard to proportionality, the question is whether the occupation and the continuation thereof is proportionate in relation to the armed attack, both in qualitative and quantitative terms. If that is not the case, the occupation may be considered to violate the prohibition of the use of force. These conditions to the exercise of the right of self-defense apply as long as there is an occurring or imminent armed attack. Also, in exercising the right of self-defense, the occupying state must fully respect international law, in particular human rights and international humanitarian law. Mr. President, it is the view of the Kingdom that the right of self-defense can also be invoked in response to an armed attack by a non-state actor. This is illustrated, for example, by the Security Council's resolutions adopted after 9/11, in which the Security Council reconfirmed the right to self-defense in response to those attacks. An occupation which fulfills the requirements of the right of self-defense may be considered as lawful under Just Abellum. An occupation which does not fulfill or no longer fulfills these requirements may lose its legal basis and hence violate the Just Cogan's prohibition of the use of force. Finally, the Kingdom underscores that occupation is an inherently temporary use of force because if it were to be permanent, it would qualify as annexation. As the Security Council emphasized in 1967 in its unanimously adopted Resolution 242, the acquisition of territory by war is inadmissible. The Court recognized the customary status of the illegality of territorial acquisition resulting from the threat or use of force in the Advisory Opinion on the Construction of a Wall. Mr. President, the Kingdom now turns to international humanitarian law, or Just in Bello, which regulates situations of armed conflict, including occupation. According to the Court, and I quote, "A great many rules of humanitarian law applicable in armed conflict are so fundamental to the respect of the human person and elementary considerations of humanity," end of quote, "that they are, and I quote, 'to be observed by all states whether or not they have ratified the conventions that contain them because they constitute intransgressable principles of international customary law,'" end quote. In the Court's view, these rules incorporate obligations which are essentially of an erga omnes character. The Kingdom considers these principles furthermore to be a peremptory norm of general international law and would like to refer in this respect to the conclusion of the International Law Commission to include the basic rules of international humanitarian law in its list of rules of Just Cogan's. The Kingdom submits that while international humanitarian law is applicable in situations of occupation, international humanitarian law does not contain rules for determining whether an occupation is lawful or unlawful as such, even if breaches of the rules are serious in nature. Rather, irrespective of its legality, international humanitarian law regulates situations of occupation once such a situation has arisen in fact. As noted by the Court, and I quote, "Under customary international law, territory is considered occupied when it is actually placed under the authority of the hostile army, and the occupation extends only to the territory where such authority has been established and can be exercised," unquote, as reflected in Article 42 of the Hague Regulations of 1907. As stated before, inherent in occupation is its temporary nature. Under the Hague Regulations, the occupying power shall be regarded only as administrator or usual fructuary. After the Second World War, the Fourth Geneva Convention further developed the law of occupation by significantly enhancing the protection of civilians in situations of occupation. As noted by the Court, the intention of the drafters of the Fourth Geneva Convention was to protect civilians who find themselves, in whatever way, in the hands of the occupying power. Furthermore, the drafters of the Fourth Geneva Convention sought to guarantee the protection of civilians in time of war regardless of the status of the occupied territories. Once an occupation has factually occurred, the occupying power is obliged to act in accordance with the law of occupation. The occupying power has to respect and protect the civilians in the occupied territory who are regarded as protected persons. Protected persons are, inter alia, entitled in all circumstances to respect for their persons and shall at all times be treated humanely. Private property is to be respected. At the same time, such measures of control and security may be taken by the occupying power in regard to protected persons as may be necessary as a result of the war. As noted before, no sovereignty can be established over occupied territory and occupied territory may not be annexed. In this regard, an important provision under the law of occupation is that the occupying power shall not deport or transfer parts of its own civilian population into the territory it occupies. Under international criminal law, such transfers, directly or indirectly, by the occupying power constitute a war crime, as reflected in the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court. It is also prohibited to deport protected persons from the occupied territory. The Kingdom underscores that all high contracting parties to the Geneva Conventions are under an obligation to ensure respect for the Geneva Conventions with reference to Article 1, common to those conventions. As noted by the Court, and I quote, "Every state party to that convention, whether or not it is a party to a specific conflict, is under an obligation to ensure that the requirements of the instruments in question are complied with," unquote. Mr. President, in relation to international human rights law, the Kingdom would first note that this body of law continues to be applicable during situations of armed conflict, including occupation. The Court has come to this conclusion in its advisory opinions on legality of the threat or use of nuclear weapons and construction of a wall. It added, in the case concerning armed activities on the territory of the Congo, that, and I quote, "International human rights instruments are applicable in respect of acts done by a state in the exercise of its jurisdiction outside its own territory, particularly in occupied territories," end of quote. The International Law Commission has equally concluded that human rights treaties continue to apply during armed conflict in its 2011 draft articles on the effects of armed conflicts on treaties. It follows that an occupying power, for the purposes of international humanitarian law, is bound to respect, protect and fulfill the human rights of all those within the occupied territory. The obligations owed by states under rules of universally applicable customary international human rights law are of an erga omnes character. human rights law are of an erga omnes character. The Court has confirmed this in the Barcelona attraction case, considering that erga omnes obligations, and I quote, "derive, for example, in contemporary international law from the principles and rules concerning the basic rights of the human person," end quote. According to the Court, this includes the prohibitions of genocide, slavery, and racial discrimination, as well as the prohibition of torture. Certain rules of international human rights law can moreover be characterized as peremptory norms of international law. According to the International Law Commission, this includes the prohibition of genocide, the prohibition of torture, the prohibition of slavery, and the prohibition of racial discrimination and apartheid, as well as the right of self-determination. Mr. President, both questions before the Court concern the legal consequences of ongoing violations of rules of international law. Several of these rules are, as indicated, peremptory norms of general international law. As we have stated before, all such peremptory norms are applicable erga omnes. I will now address the additional legal consequences for all states and international organizations in the event of a serious breach of such a peremptory norm. It being noted that these consequences are additional to the regular obligations arising from the commission of an internationally wrongful act. The rules on the legal consequences for states when a serious breach of a peremptory norm occurs are reflected in Articles 40, 41, and 48 of the Articles on the Responsibility of States for Internationally Wrongful Acts. The relevant provisions for states and international organizations may be found in Articles 41, 42, and 49 of the draft articles on responsibility of international organizations. According to the Kingdom, these provisions reflect customary international law. These legal consequences may be divided into categories: substantive consequences and procedural consequences. I will only address the Articles on State Responsibility in my statement. However, it is equally applicable to the draft articles on the responsibility of international organizations. Article 40 of the Articles on State Responsibility defines a serious breach as "a gross or systematic failure by the responsible state to fulfill its obligation under a peremptory norm." Article 41 stipulates the particular substantive consequences of such a breach, not only for the responsible state but for the international community as a whole, including that state. In sum, states shall cooperate to bring the serious breach to an end, shall not recognize as lawful a situation created by such breach, and shall not render aid or assistance in maintaining the situation. The Court has confirmed the binding nature of the rules reflected in Article 41 in jurisdictional immunities. The Court has on multiple occasions pronounced the legal consequences of serious breaches of norms affecting the international community as a whole. In Barcelona attraction, the Court established that obligations owed towards the international community as a whole are the concern of all states, and that, and I quote, "in view of the importance of the rights involved, all states can be held to have a legal interest in their protection. They are obligations erga omnes," end of quote. The Court further confirmed these obligations in its advisory opinions on Namibia, the construction of a wall, and the separation of the Chacos Archi Palaco. Thus, the jurisprudence of the Court supports the obligations reflected in Article 41 of the Articles on State Responsibility. The Court has also identified the obligation of non-recognition and the prohibition to render aid and assistance, and the obligation to cooperate to bring the consequences of the serious breach of a peremptory norm to an end. As to the specific implementation of these rules, the Kingdom observes the following: First, the obligation to cooperate to bring to an end the consequences of the serious breach of a peremptory norm will, in most cases, and particularly in cases concerning self-determination and decolonization, be implemented most effectively through the United Nations. However, should cooperation in the context of the United Nations fail to materialize, or should the United Nations be unable to take appropriate action, states are not relieved from their obligation to cooperate to bring the consequences of the breach to an end. In that case, they are obliged to seek cooperation through regional or bilateral forum. Second, the obligation not to recognize as lawful the situation brought about through the serious breach of a peremptory norm must take into account the exceptions to that rule, as formulated by the Court in the Namibia Advisory Opinion. Third, the rendering of unlawful aid and assistance contrary to the prohibition thereto does not give rise to international responsibility of the aiding or assisting state for the underlying situation or internationally wrongful act, but only for its unlawful aid or assistance. Fourth, the obligation not to render aid or assistance includes an obligation not to undermine measures, including sanctions, taken by other states in their endeavor to bring to an end the serious breach of a peremptory norm, in particular when the state undermining those measures does so knowing that its conduct contributes to the maintenance of the unlawful situation. Finally, it is our view that a serious breach of a peremptory norm entitles states other than the injured state to take a countermeasure against the responsible state as a legal consequence of that breach. Such resort to countermeasures by a non-injured state must be in accordance with the customary rules on countermeasures, including the conditions of proportionality and reversibility. As a final observation, it may be recalled that the Kingdom considers that all peremptory norms are applicable erga omnes. Therefore, the procedural legal consequence of a serious breach thereof is that all states and international organizations have legal standing to invoke responsibility for such a breach. They may claim cessation of continuing internationally wrongful acts, assurances and guarantees of non-repetition, and performance of the obligation of reparation. A claim concerning reparation is restricted in the sense that it must be in the interest of the injured state or international organization, or of the beneficiaries of the obligation breached, and such beneficiaries may include individuals and peoples. Mr. President, this brings me to the end of my statement. We sincerely hope that your advice will contribute to achieving peace in the Middle East. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the delegation of the Netherlands for its presentation. I invite the next participating delegation, Bangladesh, to address the Court. Let me call upon His Excellency Mr. Riaz Hamidullah to take the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Court, it's my distinct honor and privilege to address the principal judicial organ of the United Nations on behalf of the People's Republic of Bangladesh and participate in these advisory proceedings on the legal consequences arising from the policies and practice of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. Bangladesh fought for 23 long years to gain her independence, and finally achieved it through a bloody war in 1971, during which three million people had to sacrifice their lives. In the early days of independent Bangladesh, in 1972, our father of the nation, Bangabundu Sheikh Mujur Rahman, said, I quote, "The world is divided in two parts: oppressors and oppressed, and I am with the oppressed," unquote. As Bangladesh pursued her own self-determination, our constitution mandated us to support oppressed peoples worldwide who are fighting imperialism, colonialism, or racism. This duty is outlined in Article 25(c) of our constitution. In accordance with this duty, Bangladesh is participating in these advisory proceedings to contribute to the realization of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. We aim to achieve this by providing this Court with our perspectives on the questions asked by the UN General Assembly in the current request for an advisory opinion. Bangladesh has long reiterated the call to end Israel's occupation of Palestine and to achieve a lasting and permanent solution which entails the establishment of a sovereign and independent Palestinian state along the P-1967 borders, with East Jerusalem as its capital. We firmly believe that the Court must heed the long overdue call to holistically examine Israel's occupation and render an opinion on the legal status of the occupation as a whole. As we heard in this very hall just last month, Gaza has been described as a living hell. On 20th May 2021, even before the ongoing war, Mr. Antonio Guterres, the UN Secretary General, said, I quote, "If there is a hell on earth, it is the lives of children in Gaza," unquote. I stand before the Court also in the context of the fast-developing circumstances in Rafah, with grave humanitarian implications for the 1.4 million Palestinian people, nearly half of them children. The ongoing war represents one of the most shameful catastrophes in the history of the modern era. The UN agencies and other humanitarian aid organizations on the ground have warned of a humanitarian disaster engulfing the tiny enclave of 2.3 million people with shortages of food, fuel, drinking water, and medicines worsening by the day. The killing of thousands of innocent civilians, particularly children, the destruction of their homes, the occupation of their ancestral lands, and the deliberate obstruction of the access to food and water all constitute blatant violations of international law and serve as textbook examples of ethnic cleansing. Bangladesh firmly believes that an advisory opinion on the questions posed by the General Assembly would undoubtedly represent a critical and logical step towards ending the illegal occupation. The dismantling of this occupation would, in turn, address the root cause of Israel's violent subjugation of the Palestinian people. We elaborated on these matters and the underlying reasoning in our submissions before the Court, Mr. President, on 24 July and 25 October last year. It is pertinent to recall that just four months back, the UN Special Reportier on the Situation of Human Rights in the Occupied Palestinian Territories, Francesca Albanis, in her report, brought up several appalling facts. I would consider it apt to quote one pertinent aspect, and I would quote, "In the occupied Palestinian territory, the fundamental right to life is under threat, as indicated by the mortality rates of Palestinian children. The neonatal mortality and infant mortality rates in the occupied Palestinian territory are respective 9.3 and 12.7 per 1,000 live births, rising to 14.8 per 1,000 live births for children under five, while in Israel they are 1.7, 2.7, and 3.4 per 1,000 live births. In addition to direct attacks on the right to life, Palestinians also endure structural violence and racial discrimination, which impedes their full development," unquote. These structural violence of the occupation and the deliberate and excessive use of force against Palestinians are indeed not limited to the recent events in Gaza. As the Special Reporter, Ms. Albanis, stated in her 2023 report, I quote, "The specter of death looms as a dominant element in the lives of Palestinian children. This reality exerts a psychosocial toll on those who manage to survive, as pointedly expressed by Oadiya, a 14-year-old girl, I quote, as she said, 'Fearing death does not prevent you from dying, but it prevents you from living,'" unquote. Thousands of Oadiyas keep crying in silence, deprived and disenfranchised for decades. Ending the occupation would necessarily bring an end to the violence that is exercised upon Palestinians on a daily basis. However, there is no end to the occupation in sight, nor is it likely to end through political means alone. It has become interminable. That much was all but confirmed by Israel's Prime Minister, Mr. Benjamin Netanyahu, on 18 January 2024. The Court's intervention to us is therefore both timely and necessary. As I proceed with this oral statement, I wish to address whether the occupation of Palestinian territory by Israel is illegal or not. Even though the great majority of states participating in these proceedings, including Bangladesh, are firmly convinced that the occupation is illegal, we note that two states contend that it is not. Next, I'll state the legal consequences that, in our view, derive from the illegal status of the occupation. On Israel's illegal occupation, Mr. President, members of the Court, the fundamental question posed by the UN General Assembly regarding the legality of the Israeli occupation is grounded in established international norms and legal principles. The State of Palestine, in its written statement, underscores the colonial and acquisitive nature of the occupation, emphasizing its dilithrous impact on the Palestinian people. The occupation, characterized by persecution, racial discrimination, and appetite, stands in clear violation of three preemptive norms of international law: the right to self-determination, the prohibition of acquiring territory by force, and the prohibition of racial discrimination and appetite. Numerous submissions have echoed these sentiments, highlighting the temporary nature of belligerent occupation as mandated by international law. The annexation of occupied territory and the settlement of the occupying power's nationals in the occupied area are explicitly prohibited, constituting illegal acquisition of territory under the UN Charter and relevant UN resolutions. Israel's prolonged occupation, coupled with its policies of colonization and annexation, underscores its illegality under international law. These actions not only contravene the UN Charter but also violate general international law, including the preemptive norm prohibiting the acquisition of territory by force. Furthermore, arguments put forth by states and international organizations reject any justification for Israel's occupation on grounds of self-defense. The occupation violates fundamental principles of international law, including the right to self-determination and the prohibition of acquiring territory by force. The advisory opinion on wall, which concluded that Israel cannot rely on self-defense to justify its actions, reinforces the notion that the occupation cannot be justified under international law. While the countries supporting Israel in these advisory proceedings have primarily focused on jurisdictional questions, a few states have addressed the merits of the occupation. One contends that an occupation can never be unlawful regardless of violations of international humanitarian law. However, this argument stands in contravention of established legal principles and has been widely found to be incorrect. Switzerland's distinction between the law of occupation and the legality of occupation further elucidates the legal framework surrounding the issue. An occupation that involves annexation or de facto control of the occupied territory constitutes an illegal acquisition of territory by force, as prohibited under international law. Ultimately, Israel's occupation, characterized by its acquisitive, colonial, and annexationist nature, represents a clear violation of international law. It serves as a means for the illegal acquisition of territory and must be brought to an immediate and unconditional end. I may also recall the UN Security Council Resolution 2334 of 23rd December 2016, which reaffirmed the obligations of Israel, the occupying power, to abide scrupulously by its legal obligations and responsibilities under the Fourth Geneva Convention in regard to the protection of civilian persons in time of war. That Security Council Resolution also condemned all measures aimed at altering the demographic composition, character, and status of the Palestinian territory occupied since 1967, including East Jerusalem, including, inter alia, the construction and expansion of settlements, transfer of Israeli settlers, confiscation of transfer of Israeli settlers, confiscation of land, demolition of homes, and displacement of Palestinian civilians in violation of international humanitarian law and relevant resolutions. Israel has flagrantly violated this and all other Security Council resolutions, and it continues to do so in furtherance of permanently maintaining its illegal occupation of Palestinian territory. At a more granular level, may I refer to the approaches of assessing legality advanced by the former UN Special Reporter, Michael Link, in his 2017 report to the UN General Assembly, and the current Special Reporter, Francesca Albanis, in her 2022 report. These are apposite and relevant to the Court's task in this case. The two approaches overlap and interrelate, but ultimately provide two pathways for determining the legal status of the occupation. I may humbly request the Court to consider the Link Report where he proposed a four-part test for determining the legality or illegality of an occupation. The Special Reporter's approach also fits within the parameters of the Court's advisory opinion on the legal consequences for states of the continued presence of South Africa in Namibia. That opinion arose out of Security Council Resolution declaring South Africa's continued presence in Namibia illegal. If South Africa's mandate could be found to be illegal due to its violation of the applicable international legal principles, so too can Israel's occupation by reason of its violation of the same principles. Therefore, applying one or both of these frameworks, which Bangladesh addressed in those for the reasons stated in our written submissions, we respectfully submit that Israel's occupation is undoubtedly illegal. I would now turn on the legal consequences, Mr. President and members of the Court. There is a broad consensus that Israel, through its denial of the Palestinian people's right to self-determination, has violated preemptive norms of international law. These violations include persecution, racial discrimination, and appetite against Palestinians, as well as the occupation, colonization, and annexation of Palestinian land. These systematic breaches severely undermine the rights of Palestinians as a people and Palestine as a state, while also hindering the prospects for a just and lasting peace in accordance with international law and relevant UN resolutions. Consequently, international law mandates the complete, unconditional, and immediate cessation of these internationally wrongful acts. All states and international organizations that have condemned Israel's conduct agree that these systematic and grave breaches carry legal consequences for Israel as the responsible state, other states, and the United Nations and other intergovernmental organizations. So, on legal consequences for Israel, first, Israel must cease all acts preventing the exercise of the right to self-determination by the Palestinian people, including rescinding discriminatory laws and measures. This cessation includes withdrawing occupation forces, dismantling illegal structures such as settlements and the wall, and repealing annexation-related legislation. And secondly, Israel must provide reparations for the damages caused and guarantee non-repetition. On the legal consequences of all other states, first, all states must ensure the immediate cessation of any impediment to the exercise of the Palestinian people's right to self-determination and uphold the prohibition of acquiring territory by force and racial discrimination and appetite. And secondly, states must not recognize the illegal situation resulting from Israel's wrongful acts, including in Jerusalem, and must not provide aid or assistance to maintain this situation. Cooperation is essential to ensure Israel's compliance with international law and humanitarian standards. On legal consequences for the United Nations, first, the UN General Assembly and Security Council should consider further action to immediately end the Israeli occupation and remove obstacles to Palestinians' rights, including self-determination. And secondly, immediate action is necessary to end the system of apartheid set up by Israel with relevant UN resolutions implemented without delay. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, the promise of a Palestinian state based on a diplomatic settlement grounded in law has been a prominent feature of the international agenda since 1948. Seventy-five years later, there exists a vast body of practice, state practice, and opinion juris that emphatically support the Palestinian people's right to an independent state. The UN Security Council and the General Assembly have adopted numerous resolutions since 1948 on the question of Palestine, recognizing, among other rights, the right of return for Palestinian refugees and the right of Palestinians to establish an independent state along the pre-1967 borders. Additionally, both the UN General Assembly and the Human Rights Council have acknowledged the Palestinian people's right to self-determination. Importantly, in 2004, this Court, in its advisory opinion on the wall, explicitly affirmed the Palestinian people's right to self-determination under international law. Bangladesh, drawing on our agonizing struggle for independence, recognizes how the State of Palestine consistently and conclusively reaffirmed her commitment to a peaceful solution. This solution, in accordance with international law and based on the aforementioned terms of reference, aims to ensure the fulfillment of the Palestinian people's inalienable rights under international law. These rights include self-determination, the right of return, the realization of independence and sovereignty of the state along pre-1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital, and the aspiration to live side by side in peace and security with Israel. The Court's steadfast commitment to universally uphold rule of law, coupled with its principle stance on the legality of Israel's half-century temporary occupation of the occupied Palestinian territory, would shine a light of hope on the beleaguered Palestinian people. A decisive determination by the Court of the illegal status of the Israeli occupation of Palestinian territory and the legal consequences that arise from such status, including an immediate, unconditional, and complete end to the occupation, would help secure the identity, respect, dignity, and existence for the present and future generations of the Palestinian people in a state of their own at peace with Israel. Mr. President, members of the Court, Palestinians are no expandable people. As much as this advisory opinion involves legal questions, it poses exceptional moral issues for the humanity. I stand before the Court, as Bangladesh deem it our sacred duty to uphold international law as well. On behalf of Bangladesh, I therefore respectfully request the Court to give full consideration to the importance of an advisory opinion at this critical moment. I'd like to thank you, Mr. President, as well as the distinguished members of the Court, for granting Bangladesh this opportunity to participate. Thank you.
I thank the delegation of Bangladesh for its presentation. I invite the next delegation, Belgium, to address the Court and call to the podium Mr. Piet Herbot. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, honorable members of the Court, it is a great honor for me to appear before you as agent for the Kingdom of Belgium in these oral proceedings concerning the request for an advisory opinion, which was submitted to you by the United Nations General Assembly in its resolution of the 30th of December 2022. Belgium is grateful to the Court for having given it the opportunity to be heard in these advisory proceedings. In light of the time available to it, Belgium shall limit its submissions to the matter of settlement and its legal consequences. As Belgium has already had the opportunity to underline, notably when it addressed the United Nations Security Council, Israel has established a veritable policy of settlement in the occupied Palestinian territory for decades now. This policy is carried out by means of a series of associated measures which are indissociable from establishment of the settlements themselves. Now, with your leave, I will first set out the general relevant legal framework, relevant when it comes to the matter of settlement of the occupied Palestinian territory. I will then spend a moment on the unlawful nature of the establishment of the colonies. Professor Vayous Koutouris will then look at the relevant rules with respect to the unlawfulness of the policy of settling the occupied Palestinian territory and the related measures adopted by Israel in that connection. And he will conclude by setting out briefly the legal consequences of the violations of international law that we shall identify or that have been identified. Mr. President, Belgium will start its statement by a brief recall of the relevant legal framework relevant to the issue of settlement. Now, Israel's policy of settlement is being implemented in the general context of the prolonged occupation of the Palestinian territory. Now, in its advisory opinion of the 9th of July 2004 on the legal consequences of the construction of a wall in the occupied Palestinian territory, the Court provided the following clarifications regarding the general legal framework regarding the occupation in question. Firstly, the Palestinian territory had been controlled by Israel since 1967, including Eastern Jerusalem, and that this territory was an occupied territory. Secondly, the illegality of territorial acquisition by force of the occupied Palestinian territory was established. And this rule prohibits the annexation of territory by Israel, including annexation of a de facto nature. Thirdly, Article 51 of the UN Charter was found by the Court to have no relevance in this case because the territory in question was a territory occupied by Israel. Fourthly, the Palestinian people enjoyed a right to self-determination. Fifthly, the instruments relative to the protection of human rights applied in an extraterritorial fashion, including in the situation of an armed conflict and military occupation. So, from what I have just said, it is clear that all territory effectively controlled by Israel beyond the 1967 borders is an occupied territory, and that its annexation, in whole or in part, be it de jure or de facto, was prohibited under international law. And therefore, the following apply to the occupied Palestinian territory. First of all, the rules of treaty-based or customary nature of international humanitarian law, in particular those which are set out in the settlement annexed to the Fourth Convention of the Hague of 1907, as well as all of the rules of the Fourth Geneva Convention of 1949. Also, the following apply: the right to self-determination and rights relative to the protection of human rights. In the case of prolonged occupation, human rights are of a particular importance when it comes to protecting the occupied population. In this connection, it should be noted that the term prolonged occupation does not relate to a specific legal category to which different rules apply. In other words, the same rules apply to all occupations, be they prolonged or not. The prolonged nature of an application does not have an effect on the applicability of the rules, but rather on their application. And so it is, for example, that the longer an occupation persists, the more difficult it becomes to invoke exceptions related to the military necessities of the occupying power, which are such exceptions being provided by certain rules of international humanitarian law. It is also ever the more difficult to invoke derogations related to the requirements of those instruments which protect human rights. Similarly, the longer the occupation, the more broadly the obligations, the positive obligations of the occupying power must be interpreted. These obligations are obligations regarding conduct. The states must deploy all means reasonably available to them to fulfill them, and a situation of prolonged occupation... Sorry, and in a situation of prolonged occupation, the control established implies that the occupying power has more means available to it to meet the positive obligations deriving from international humanitarian, international human rights law. Now, having made this or given this brief presentation of the general legal framework, I will now spend some time looking at the unlawful, unlawful nature of the establishment of these settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory. Paragraph six of Article 49 of the Fourth Geneva Convention of 1949 provides that "the occupying power," and I quote, "the occupying power shall not deport or transfer parts of its own civilian population into the territory it occupies," end of quotation. And in its advisory opinion of 2004, your Court found that, and I quote, "Israel has conducted a policy and developed practices involving the establishment of settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory contrary to the terms of paragraph six of Article 49," end of quotation. Now, in line with these findings of the Court, Belgium avers the unlawful nature of the establishment of settlements in the occupied Palestinian territory under the Fourth Geneva Convention. Furthermore, Belgium considers that establishment of the settlements was inconsistent with the relevant resolutions of the Security Council. Now, given that I do not have much time, I will simply point you to Resolution 2334 adopted on the 23rd of December 2016. Now, based on the criteria set out by your Court in its advisory opinion on Namibia, this resolution is certainly one which sets out the obligations bearing upon members of the United Nations. And so, having stated that the creation of settlements constituted a flagrant violation under international law, the Security Council, and I quote, reiterated its demand that Israel immediately and completely cease all settlement activities in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, end of quotation. Now, in light of the clear wording of the paragraph I've just quoted, it is clear that Israel's pursuance of the settlement policy contravenes Resolution 2334 issued by the Security Council. Now, that brings me to the end of the second point in these oral presentations by Belgium. Mr. President, with your leave, I will now offer the floor to Professor Vayous Koutouris, who will continue the presentation.
I thank Mr. Herbot. I'd now give the floor to Professor Vayous Koutouris. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, honorable members of the Court, it is a great honor for me to appear before you for the first time on behalf of the Kingdom of Belgium. I will now continue on with Belgium's oral submissions by studying the relevant rules, rules which are relevant to the unlawfulness of the settlement policy, the policy of settling the occupied Palestinian territory, and then I will conclude with the legal consequences of the violations identified. Now, in its Resolution 2334 of 2016, the Security Council very clearly emphasizes the multi-dimensional nature very clearly emphasizes the multi-dimensional nature of the policy of settling the occupied Palestinian territory. Along the same lines, Belgium, in its interventions before the Security Council, stressed the relationship between the establishment of settlements and its associated measures, measures which are an integral part of this true policy of illegal settlement. It is therefore impossible to legally analyze this settlement policy without considering the specific measures deployed to realize it within the general context in which it is being applied and the effects it produces. The measures used to realize this settlement policy, taken individually, are problematic when it comes to the law which applies to the occupied territory, in other words, and in particular, international humanitarian and international human rights law. In this respect, Belgium has always condemned, in particular, the use of violence by the settlers against the occupied Palestinian population and wishes to highlight Israel's obligation to put an end to the violence and to punish its perpetrators. More fundamentally, the policy of settlement aims to bring about an alteration of the demographic composition of the occupied Palestinian territory and its status as a territory itself. In this regard, this policy conflicts with various fundamental rights or fundamental rules rather of international law. I will successively walk you through the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force, the right to self-determination, and the principle of non-discrimination. First of all, the settlement policy flies in the face of prohibition of the acquisition of territory by force. This prohibition is an integral part of the prohibition on the use of force, which is set out in paragraph two, sorry, paragraph four of Article two of the United Nations Charter, Resolution 2625 of the UN General Assembly, as well as paragraph A of Article three, that is to say, the definition annexed to Resolution 331429, Resolution of the General Assembly. Now, in its advisory opinion of 2004, your court confirmed the applicability of the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force to the occupied Palestinian territory. This prohibition covers both the de jure and the de facto annexation. The measures adopted by Israel as part of its policy of settlement aim to create irreversible facts on the ground and to consolidate its control over the territory concerned by establishing settlements. These measures thereby create a situation in which a fait accompli, which resembles a de facto annexation, is brought about, such a situation as defined by this court in the advisory opinion of 2004. Secondly, the settlement policy is inconsistent with the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, enshrined in the United Nations Charter and reaffirmed in the General Assembly's Resolution 262515, as well as the first article of the International Covenant of Civil and Political Rights and the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights of 1966, to which, both, to which, in the case of both covenants, Israel is party. Resolution 262515 specifies that the fact of submitting peoples to subjugation, to domination or foreign exploitation constitutes a violation of the right to self-determination and that states rather have a duty to refrain from using any coercive measures that would deprive peoples of their right to self-determination. Now, in its advisory opinion of 2004, your court found that the right to self-determination had been violated. In doing so, it paid particular attention to the measures, bringing about, and I quote, "the departure of Palestinian populations from certain areas," end of quotation, and also paid particular attention to alterations to the demographic composition of the occupied Palestinian territory. Similarly, in its report published on the 14th of September 2022, the Independent International Commission, created by the Human Rights Council and tasked with investigating or conducting investigations in the occupied Palestinian interior, territory including Eastern Jerusalem and in Israel, underlined that, and I quote, "the choice of location of certain new settlements further reduces the likelihood of an end to the occupation and violates the right of Palestinians to self-determination," end of quotation. It follows from this, from what I have said, that the adoption of coercive measures in connection with the policy of settlement aims to alter the status and the demographic makeup of the occupied Palestinian territory and that it runs counter to the right of self-determination. Thirdly, the policy of settlement raises serious concerns with respect to the principle of non-discrimination. Indeed, the establishment of settlements is intrinsically linked to the establishment of the two distinct institutional and legal systems, one for the settlement residents and the other for the Palestinian population of the occupied territory. The Independent International Commission of Inquiry, which was mandated to investigate in the occupied Palestinian territory, including Eastern Jerusalem and in Israel, as well as the Committee on the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, have underlined the problematic nature of the measures concerned with respect to the principle of non-discrimination. And therefore, and this will bring me to the end of this part of the Kingdom of Belgium's oral submissions. So, the settlement policy is problematic with respect to the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force, the right to self-determination, and the principle of non-discrimination. I shall now turn my attention to the fourth and final point of our oral submissions, and that is the legal consequences of the violations which we have identified and have been identified. I will start with the legal consequences for Israel before spending some time on the legal consequences for third states and international organizations. As an introductory comment, Belgium would like to underline the fact that various or that several of the rules mentioned before are Jews' Coggan's norms of general international law. Consider, for example, the right to self-determination and the prohibition on the use of force, which includes prohibition on occupation and annexation of territory by force. Therefore, no circumstance excluding unlawfulness can be invoked to justify their violation. For Israel, the violations identified lead to consequences provided for in the customary rules of international responsibility, which are codified in the articles concerning the international responsibility of states, which were adopted by the International Law Commission in 2001. It is a matter of an obligation to end an ongoing violation, an obligation of reparation, as well as the obligation to provide assurances and guarantees of non-repetition. Specifically concerning the policy of settlement with respect to the ongoing nature of the violation, Belgium refers in particular to Israel's obligation to end all settlement activity. As was affirmed in the advisory opinion of 2004, the obligation to make reparation should first and foremost take the form of restitution. In other words, inter alia, the dismantlement of the settlements, the annulment of legal acts concerning the settlement policy and the restoration of property requisitioned or expropriated in carrying out this policy. This is also the option which is preferred in the Security Council Resolution 2334 of 2016. Now, as regards third states, their obligations are based on several rules of international law. In other words, rules relevant to the international responsibility of states. Also, the obligation to enforce international humanitarian law and the right to self-determination. Firstly, as regards grave violations of use Coggan's norms of international law, the states must not recognize as legal the situation arising from the situation, sorry, the states must not recognize as legal the situation or a situation arising from a grave violation of a peremptory norm. States must not render aid or bet in maintaining the unlawful situation created by a serious violation of a peremptory norm and must cooperate to end the violation. Secondly, as regards violations of humanitarian international law, the obligation under treaty law and customary law to enforce these rules is set out in the first common article of the Four Geneva Conventions. This obligation also bears on third states, and it includes both negative and positive obligations. The obligation to not aid or abet the commission of a violation is an example of such a negative obligation. And the obligation to take measures to incite the war parties to cease violations of international humanitarian law is an example of a positive obligation. Thirdly, a similar obligation bears upon third states as regards the right to self-determination. Indeed, Resolution 2625 provides that, and I would cite, "all states have a duty to promote jointly with other states or separately the achievement of the principle of equality of the rights of people and their right to self-determination," end of quotation. Resolution 2334 of 2016 provides a specific example of enforcement of such obligations. In that resolution, the Security Council calls upon all states to distinguish in their relevant dealings between the territory of the state of Israel and those territories occupied since 1967. Now, that call reflects the obligation to conduct dealings, including economic and trade dealings, in such a way that there is no recognition, no assistance, and no contribution provided to maintain the unlawful situation of the settlements. Finally, and this will be the last point made by the Kingdom of Belgium, the legal consequences associated to the serious violations of the peremptory norms that I have mentioned herefore also apply to international organizations. Now, of course, international organizations operate within the bounds of their remits, but where they have discretion to act, they must exercise it to end serious violations of peremptory norms. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, members of the court, this concludes the oral submissions of the Kingdom of Belgium. I thank you for your kind attention.
I thank the delegation of Belgium for its presentation. That brings to an end this morning's hearing. The court will reconvene this afternoon at 3 p.m. to hear Belize, Bolivia, Brazil, and Chile. Hearing stands adjourned.